Let's this meeting now, the city that takes a stand with you in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And Mr. Silio, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. Place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible deliverance of justice for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Marcus?
Yes, I did want to say a couple of words about the Lancaster Cemetery yesterday recognized our veterans and had a very special ceremony. Dale DeBree always does a wonderful job and I had wanted to actually have someone come forward and share a speech that they had done, which was by Armando Carlos, but I do not see him here yet. It was an outstanding speech. He just, he's 11 years old. He goes to the Tamaras School. He's in sixth grade and he did an amazing job and I told him, I says, "I think I'm in love." And we did ask him to be here. He was planning on it and something must have held them up. So maybe we could do that a little bit later on if he does show up. But the ceremony itself was excellent and they recognized Ivan Westerfield and his family came from a very long way. Mr. Norm Hickling's here tonight. He could even expound on that. But their ceremonies get better and better every time and I appreciate them inviting me to come.
As soon as he gets here, interrupt me and we will put him on, okay? Thank you. I've got a bunch of add-ons, so I'm getting confused, but I'll get there. And now we have the student athlete Darren Beckett from Lancaster High School. Is Darren here? Darren, where'd you get that hair? Oh, and I haven't signed it yet. I have to sign it. That way you know it's real. So Darren, you think I can do my hair that way?
Yeah.
What do you think? Think I get more votes, less votes? Certainly get the younger vote, wouldn't I? Thank you. Come on over here. Darren is a two-way football star playing both offense and defense for the Eagles. Who's Lancaster High School's Eagles? He's rushed over a thousand yards, returned kickoffs for an average of 25 yards and has two interceptions on defense. That means you don't get to rest. No wonder your hair's standing up. Darren has been selected to both the All Golden Lake Football and Track Relay Teams. He has won several CIF and School Academic and Leadership Awards. You're smart on top of it.
That's right.
Wow. He's the Congressional, he's in Congressional Student Leadership, National Youth Leadership, National Society of High Schoolers, Scholars Academic Integrity, Scholar-Athlete and Principal's Honor Role. Wow. I am impressed. He's got more. His leadership skills resulted in him being elected captain of both the football and track teams. He's been recruited by top schools such as UCLA, Stanford and UC Berkeley. So who'd you pick?
I don't know yet.
Darren compliments his academic and sports skills by volunteering for community activities such as World Vision, sponsored for AIDS victims and 2008 Pride of Nation. You've got to apply for the Mayor's Scholarship. I mean, especially if you... For his outstanding accomplishments in sports, academics, leadership and service to the community, I would like to present Darren Beckett with the Mayor's Athlete of the Month Award. Wait a minute, hold on. Let's do it one more time. This guy's going places. I'm going to put this one on the wall. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mayor Paris?
Yes?
Armando is here.
Armando, where are you? We want to hear from you. Come on up here. Where do we want to do this at? We need to put a mic on him. Come on up here. Take my mic, okay? There, that way everybody can see you do it, all right? Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Armando and today my subject is Veterans Day. One of the most important things in the world is gratitude. But far too often do we get so busy in our day-to-day lives that we don't take the time to remember the things for which to be grateful or to express our gratitude to those who have done so much for us. Thankfully, this day is an exception. It is a day for both remembrance and gratitude. It is easy for us to take for granted the blessings of living in this prosperous and peaceful country, forgetting how it came to be that way. But today, we honor those who know very well how this all came about. They know what it means to go to the far corners of the world and put their lives on the line in mortal battle against enemies who would love to destroy our way of life. Some of those came back and some did not. Many lie at rest in the grounds around us here today. It is too late to express our gratitude to them. Others are alive here in our midst today. To them, we say a heartfelt thank you. May each of us renew our determination to not only be more grateful people, but to freely and openly express our gratitude to the men and women who have risked their lives so that we do not have to risk ours. Thank you.
Lancaster has great kids.
Let me just mention...
You did a wonderful job. You have to be incredibly proud.
Mr. Marion Owens was Antelope Valley High School, at Antelope Valley High School for 32 years and he has helped with this speech writing, I believe, right, Mr. Owens? And he has about another dozen students that do this on a regular basis. And Mom and Dad are here, the Harrels. We appreciate your help with that. Mr. Bozigan was, I wish I could take all the credit. Mr. Bozigan's the one that said that we should have him come and speak to us tonight and give us that delivery. One of the things that I read yesterday which described, someone had described a veteran as the following and I thought it was just so perfect, is a veteran is someone who at one point in his or her life wrote a blank check made payable to the United States of America for an amount of up to and including my life. That is honor and there are way too many people in this country who no longer understand it. And thank you so much, Armando. We appreciate you coming here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, now we have two Section 8 Commissioners, Commissioner Haley and Shepler, that have not been sworn in yet and we're going to swear them in now. Come on up.
While they're coming down, I don't know if you all could see, but when Armando gave his speech, that was without notes. That was off, that was from memory. That was better than I do. I've got some lawyers I want you to work with.
Okay. I, let's take your name?
I'm Haley.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
Take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, I will well and faithfully discharge
I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you very much. So now we have a full commission, right?
Commissioner Haley and Shepler, if you will meet Deputy City Clerk Everett at the back, she has a document for you to sign, please.
And now we have the City of Palmdale, which has a presentation for us about the upcoming power plant they're building.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, members of City Council. My name's Mike Michelle. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Palmdale. I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share with you our project. With me tonight I have Tony Penna from Inland Energy. He's our consultant who's been helping us with this project. He has a short PowerPoint presentation to present to you tonight. So I'll give you Tony. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello? Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go through this as quickly as you like and I'm happy to slow down at any point during the presentation. Essentially, I wanted to tell you a little bit about the project, the development team that's working on it, its location, the technology, what we believe are the benefits to the Antelope Valley, things of that nature, and then we'll wrap it up at the end and there'll be plenty of time to answer your questions. Project began back in 2005, September 2005. The Palmdale City Council approved the project. We've been working on it since then to submit an application to the California Energy Commission. The team that's in place is Inland Energy controlling the efforts of Enser, who is probably the premier environmental consulting firm for siting power plants in the state of California. Latham &amp; Watkins holds the same prestigious title for permitting. And Navigant works for some of the engineering as well as Keywood Power, which some of you may know as Bib Engineering once upon a time. We're working with General Electric for the combustion turbine technology and with Abengoa Solar for the solar field. The plant is essentially a hybrid. It merges the gas turbine combined cycle technology that is used throughout the state and the country with the solar thermal technology. This is not the same solar thermal technology that your plant is using, but rather this is the type that you would see out at Kramer Junction or Daggett, the parabolic trough mirrors. Just a little quick isometric to talk about how it works. The sun heats up the tube that sits in front of the parabolic trough. That oil within that tube gets so hot that it's capable of boiling water. We take the steam from that boiled water to run a steam turbine. The parabolic trough technology, as I said, it's been demonstrated for some time. It is what we've passed out at Kramer Junction and Daggett for many years. As you might imagine, the, probably the same thought process that you use with going with e-solar, we have great renewable solar thermal energy source here and it seems, you know, almost a shame not to take full advantage of it. We're merging it with the gas turbine technology because we are looking at the Southern California Edison Company's predictions that we're, not only do we need renewable energy, but we need energy as a whole. We're merging it with the combined cycle so that the plant will be available to run 24 hours a day. So essentially, we took two well-defined technologies and merged them together for a hybrid concept. Not unlike an automobile hybrid, you've, you know, can run on the electricity or on the, on the internal combustion engine. The benefit here or the standard design has a combustion turbine connected to a generator. That's what is typically referred to as simple cycle. Some years back, we were able to capture the waste heat from burning the gas and use it to heat water in a heat recovery steam generator and thereby being able to power a steam turbine and then run another generator. So in essence, it's more electricity without burning more fossil fuel. In the solar field, very simple, well-understood design. You heat up the, the oil out in the solar field, you boil water in a boiler, you run steam to a steam turbine and then you power a generator. What we've done is essentially eliminate one of the steam turbines. So it is in fact a true hybrid as opposed to two technologies just sharing the same site. The location and size of the plant, output will be 570 megawatts. It is located, the intersection, essentially this is Plant 42 here. This is Avenue M and Sierra Highway. As you can see, the solar field will take up about 250 acres. The power block where we house the, the steam turbine and the gas turbines will be a much smaller footprint, about 25 acres. Facing, it's an artist idea of what it'll look like when we're all done, facing Palmdale and facing Lancaster. The benefits that we see, and I'd be surprised if they weren't the same that you identified, see that as a great economic boost to the Antelope Valley. We look at some diversification in the revenue. We are, you know, for the most part have been considered an aviation community for a while. This will bring in some diversity of revenue. Will, power plants are good paying jobs for the, for the younger folks. They're a long-term job. A power plant has a life expectancy in excess of 30 years. So this is something that will serve more than one generation. We'll be able to use reclaimed water. Clearly, in an arid environment that we live in, water is a precious commodity. Looking for a beneficial use for reclaimed water was important to us and that's how we're going to do that. And then power plants of this size typically spend in the vicinity of $5 to $6 million a year for supplies and what have you. And we see that going into the, to the local community to the fullest extent possible from an operating plant. The schedule, I didn't bother showing you 2005, but rather, we submitted the application to the Energy Commission earlier this year. It was deemed data adequate about 45 or 50 days later, which starts a one-year review period that the Energy Commission does. That one-year review is a very public process. Not only as a sistering city would you be invited to attend, but all residents are entitled to, invited to attend. And the Commissioners come down. In fact, the first such public hearing will be December 4th. And in addition to being legally invited, you're also, you know, cordially invited. We'd like to welcome you to attend. The decision typically is rendered 12 to 14 months from the time the project is deemed data adequate. And we're predicting a 27-month construction schedule, which means if we can adhere to this schedule, the summer demand for 2012, we can be servicing that loop. The city is, the City of Palmdale is developing the project. It has a great and very experienced team in place. We are moving along, being already data adequate. The California Energy Commission has been to the site previously. This will be their first formal visit coming up on December 4th. The design was permitted a couple of months ago in the City of Victorville for the Victorville Two project. So, and that was a project that we worked with the city on to get permitted. The Energy Commission therefore is very comfortable with this design and we suspect that they'll live more to the 12-month schedule. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you, sir.
Any questions? A couple of questions. One is, in terms of air quality, what are you driving the gas turbines with to begin the process?
That'll be natural gas and we have, working on agreement with Southern Cal, SoCal Gas to bring pipeline quality gas to the project.
And the other thing is, water is always an issue in the desert and you're using reclaimed water. What's, what's the source of that water going to be?
The primary source of that water will be from the Palmdale Treatment Plant. And if that plant needs to go down for some catastrophic reason, we would be looking to get water from the pipeline that's going to be connecting Palmdale and Lancaster. And the source of that water would then be from the Lancaster Treatment Facility.
And have you had conversations with the sanitation district that serves Lancaster about that?
Yes, sir, we have.
I sit on that board and I've not been privy to those. I'd be, I would like to talk to you about those further.
Oh, absolutely.
Have you considered using not our shallow aquifer, but our deep aquifer for a secondary source of water as well?
We have, we've not reviewed that or researched that in as much detail as we have the reclaimed water, but it is an option that we have explored somewhat, but not fully vetted.
My concern is this. We have, sanitation district in the city has put a lot of time, money and effort into finding other sources of water replacing potable water, finding uses for reclaimed water so that we can cut down on our use of potable water. And I know the amount of water that a power plant can use could usurp virtually all of the reclaimed water that we can put through our purple pipe. That concerns me that we would not be fulfilling what we said we would do, which is replacing what we're using potable water for now. So I think that conversation needs some clarity and needs a little bit more depth and exploration between sanitation district, City of Lancaster and the City of Palmdale.
Yes, sir, I understand.
If I could just add on that, you know, that's something that, I had a presentation from them down in Palmdale and that's exactly what I brought up to them also was using the deep aquifer because it is a closed system and they don't have to worry about the arsenic levels as they do with potable water. And I think that's something that they seriously need to look at.
I'm curious as to the location. Is Palmdale abandoning the Palmdale Airport as a major airport sometime in the future? Because it seems to be taking up a major portion of what would normally be, you know, airport facilities if it were to, you know, 10, 20 years from now be a major airport.
Well, my understanding is the, the City of Palmdale actually purchased this property for this project. So whatever airport or aviation plans they have, I'm not personally privy to, but I do know that this area is being looked at for, you know, light industrial.
I was just curious as to the location. You know, as the, as the mayor, it's my position that if this, this project benefits the City of Lancaster, we're, we're interested in helping in the way we can, including being a valued customer. However, in order to be a valued customer, it means that we have to ask a lot of questions. We have to investigate thoroughly. And when certain Type A councilmembers in Palmdale accuse us of throwing, throwing them under the bus every time we ask a question, that makes it difficult.
Understand?
What we would like to do is have a meaningful dialogue with you every step of the way. But every time we have a concern, we need to feel free to express it. I mean, that's the only way agreements are reached. That's the only way viable projects come to fruition. And I would hope that you would convey my sentiments to our sister city, to the South, because we sincerely do want to work with them on this. But I don't want to read front-page stories from, from Councilman Hoffbauer every time I have a concern, because I imagine that given a project of this magnitude that could have potential implications for the City of Lancaster, I'm going to have a thousand questions. That doesn't mean I don't want the project to go forward. It doesn't mean that I don't want to see it come to fruition as soon as possible. But what it does mean, that we want to protect the well-being of the citizens of Lancaster and cut the best deal for the citizens of Lancaster, because that's our job.
Completely understand. I hope that tonight's presentation will be interpreted as our first step to that dialogue and your questions are definitely welcome and encouraged to that end.
Thank you. Personally, I think this is a, this is an incredible step in the right direction for the entire Antelope Valley. It would appear that, that, that the entire Antelope Valley will soon become the 21st century energy capital of the world. That's what we're looking forward to.
Senator, I see that happen very easily with the project that you have undertaken now, with this and with others who want to be in the Antelope Valley to take advantage of the, of all of our resources. I could see that easily come into fruition.
Be sure to convey our sentiments to Palmdale.
I promise you.
Absolutely. We'll be a cooperative partner in this venture.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I'm talking into a dead mic. Did you do that? I did that. Okay. And now we have another presentation that wasn't on the, on the agenda, but Animal Control's here to talk about our favorite problem, which I guess is not a problem anymore. Is that right?
Fast becoming.
Yeah. I mean, you're doing, you're making incredible strides. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Mayor. And also I'd like to thank you for your leadership and for your vision and for your commitment to public safety for the community of Lancaster. Few more thank yous I'd like to do a lot while I'm on that subject. I'd like to thank Mr. Bozigan for his communication and guidance with our department to provide better service to the community of Lancaster. Also to Mr. Norm Hickling, who we're in very close contact with and he's very supportive of, of the community as well as our department. Also, Animal Control Officer Two, Megan Imers, who I introduced you to previously, has, this, this program has been successful in large part to her, her efforts, her initiative, her understanding the community. It was, it was her idea to actually go and hit the high-impact areas to work with the postal office, to work with the schools and the bus routes and to actually go around and investigate abandoned houses and look for animals being kept in some of these homes, harboring illegal pit bulls and that type of thing. Something that I failed to mention the last time that I was here that I wanted to make mention of, it's a very important tool and it's called the Neighborhood Safety Program. And during the period from September to present, we conducted 59 neighborhood safety programs. And what that consists of, it's a proactive approach whereby rather than waiting for a pit bull to attack, escape or cause some injury to a person or an animal, concerned citizens can call us up and indicate that there's a potential safety problem. Let's say the fence is in ill-repair, the dog hasn't escaped, but it allows us to, to implement this tool where we go out, we actually investigate the fencing, we look at confinement, we look at licensing, we look at span neuter if applicable, we look at shelter, we look at vaccination and we educate... at vaccination, and we educate the, the person, the owner of the pit bull. So that's a very important tool, and we did 59 of those. So potentially, we saved 59 potential problems out there in the community for that period of time. We also conducted 42 illegal kennels, that's over three dogs. These are all pit bulls, mind you. And also, please keep in mind that these were not just pit bulls that, that we conducted. All these statistics relate specifically to pit bulls. However, there were many other breeds that were also warned, impounded, citations issued, and, and maybe more appropriately, it should be called a dominant breed task force as opposed to pit bull task force, because there were many other dogs that we picked up in these sweeps that we didn't focus on in our statistics, but that were also potential dangers in the community. As a matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, I had a woman call me from the city of Pacoima, and she says, "You know, I want you guys to do what you're doing up there in Antelope Valley down here in Pacoima." I said, "Well, ma'am, there's only one problem with that, we don't service Pacoima, but please contact your local animal control. We'd be, we'd be glad to, to provide them with the information." We also conducted 87 humane investigations. We conducted 118 investigations of pit bulls owned by owners at large. We conducted 165 stray pit bulls at large. We issued 95 citations. We issued, we conducted 96 hours of patrol at the parks, and we picked up 163 stray pit bulls in the field. So the total calls handled were 471 to date.
Wow.
Yeah.
And you took 163 off the street?
Absolutely.
That's incredible.
Yes. And, and we're really doing some major improvements to the Lancaster shelter. We have a new span neuter clinic that we're planning to open up. We're expanding and adding additional kennel space for both the dogs and the cats. Last year, we impounded over 9,000 cats between September '07 to August '08.
Well, I didn't want you picking on the cats.
No. People bring them in by the boxes.
Oh, I see, okay.
Try to turn the faucet off, though. Over 12, approximately 12,000 dogs as well. So needless to say, this program has been very successful. I'd like to publicly acknowledge and thank Supervisor Michael Antonovich, who is actually looking to identify funding for two additional Animal Control Officer Twos, these are more experienced officers, and a Animal Control Collection vehicle for a task force so that we can continue these same efforts and to address these issues related to not only pit bulls, but any loose dogs.
You know, on behalf of the city of Lancaster, I, I, you know, I certainly commend your department for the incredible job you've done, and, and quite honestly, it was an innovative program that probably ought to be written down and, and so other, other cities and counties can use it. And, and also the supervisor, you know, Supervisor Antonovich, he, he's not a drumbeatler, he doesn't make a loud bang, but he took this problem and actually did an innovative fix and put the weight of his office behind it, and our hats off to him and our gratitude from the city of Lancaster, and, Mr. Hickling, I hope you would extend that to him. It was incredibly responsive to, to a serious problem, and we, we will never know the number of children whose lives have not been damaged or, or taken as, as a result of your efforts, but we do know that some children who would not be safe are safe now, and we, we thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir, and...
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, and, and one other thing I just wanted to mention is that in compiling the statistics and the data, we also were able to identify the needs of the community and to sort of take a different look and approach at how we could better service the public safety issue and, and address the pit bull problem in the city. And, and so it's, it's been a real educational experience and very gratifying for us and for the officers as well, because they're able to see the statistics and actually see the difference that they're making on a weekly basis, and when you compile them all together, they are pretty impressive, so I thank you for that.
Thank you. And thank you, that, that's a great job.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may for one second, from staff's perspective, I can't tell you what a pleasure it is, a lot of times when we identify a problem that we think is not solvable by the agency, we think we have to get involved, it takes money, it takes time, and they changed incredibly to address this issue, and I am just so appreciative. We have enough problems to deal with, and it's nice when someone else helps us. Thank you very much.
And I haven't seen a pit bull in a month. You've been out of town?
What?
You've been out of town?
Well, I've been out of town a couple of weeks.
Okay, now we have the redevelopment consent calendar. Anything to be removed?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you.
Don't I have a conflict on one of these?
On RCC 3, yes.
So how are we going to do that? Am I going to leave now, or?
No, we can remove RCC 3 now, and I'll move that we adopt the, the consent calendar as currently comprised.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, let's vote.
This must be down low.
Okay, it's unanimous. And I'm in, I, I leave now. I have a conflict on RCC 3 in that my wife owns some property in that area.
Let the record reflect that the chair has been turned over to myself, and Mayor Paris has left the room, so I'll entertain any motions or discussions in RCC 3.
Move adoption RCC 3. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Call for a vote.
If I could have Councilman Mann, maybe ask the mayor to step back in. Thank you. Did you hear me better that time? Maybe they turned up my mic. Let the record reflect that the mayor has now come back in, and the chair has been returned in.
Okay. Now we have the council consent calendar. Any items to be removed?
No, sir.
Any discussion on any items?
Not to be removed, but I would like to make a, a comment on CC 17. That is our, I think we've actually, I think I put that on the, on the agenda about one year ago, so, but it's taken some time. I think it's great. We've worked out what's going to be the best and the most beneficial to the city, and this is actually revenue generation without any money upfront. So I think with the increasing of cell tower placements, I think this is a good thing, and it only gives us a, a good plan to work from, but also has somebody out there aggressively working for us.
So when does that mean we get free wireless?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
But that, that ultimately what we're going to have, is that right?
Uh, not by this particular contract, no.
What does this contract give us?
This contract gives us, A, a master plan, as the vice mayor stated, without paying for it upfront, and then the ability to colate, co-locate cell services and also hide them so they're not quite as visible on sides of buildings, et cetera, on city facilities, and it also gives us a revenue stream. It's for current technology cellphone usage. Currently, private companies come, and they may make a deal with anyone in the city. You might have three vendors that place it in the same location. This will allow us to colate, co-locate on the same tower, if you will. And our, and the representative for the company actually goes out there and tries to bring business to us, rather than being co-located or placed on private property, it's placed on city property, and I think, what's the revenue stream right now, Mr. Bozegian, that we bring in? Uh, it's approaching $400,000 annually, three to $400,000 annually. Three hundred to four hundred thousand annually. Quite a, quite a bit of money.
Which brings me back to my subject. Is there any plans in place to bring free wireless to the, the citizens of Lancaster?
Uh, we've gone down that road a couple of times. I'll have to get back to the council on that, I don't know where we're at. We did make an agreement once with the company, it didn't pan out.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this, the agreement for CC 17, that, that includes all wireless services, not just cellular, is that correct?
That I do not know. I'll ask Barbara if she knows.
This would be specific to cellular service, which some cellular has internet capability, but it's not for Wi-Fi service at this point in time.
I was just thinking, in terms of co-location for other users of the RF spectrum besides cell companies, because a tower's ugly no matter who the user is, so...
We can talk to the, with, to ATS about that and see what the opportunities are to, to go that direction as well.
Good. Of course, we could build a new city hall, and it'd be really hot, never mind. I would like, while we're on the subject, I, I would like a report back sometime, and there's no rush on it, but I would like to know where all of the areas are in the city that, and I'm mostly concerned about high school and college kids, where they have access to the internet, meaning Wi-Fi, without having to pay for it. I, I'm concerned that there, there's a subgroup of our, of our kids that aren't able to access the internet. That may be a misplaced fear, or it may be reality, and so I'd like to know. Are, are there enough locations where these kids can get on the internet and do their research and stay current?
Certainly.
People do on the internet? Okay, good. Not what you do, Mr. Siliot, what other... Ow! I couldn't help it.
Touche.
And I'd also like to take CC 18 off the consent calendar. Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's unanimous. I took CC 18 off because that's the youth commission. When do you want me to do that?
Um, you can ask for a motion, and then if it passes, you, these are your nominees, then you would swear them in.
Okay, I'd like to introduce them first and do their, do their rundown. We have tonight this group of young people on the front row, and I guess even on the second row, right? Not just the front row? That's great. Uh, they're the 2008, 2009 appointments to the Lancaster Youth Commission. We're, I will nominate them tonight, and we will vote on them. The Lancaster Youth Commission was created by the city council in 1992. All of my children, I think, have been on it, haven't they? And your, your son was, and yeah. It's, it's a magnificent program, and you're going to have a lot of fun. You're also going to learn a lot. And you don't want to model my mayorship. Okay. The youth commissioners were nominated by the different high schools in the Lancaster area. There are Antelope Valley Christian, Antelope Valley High School, Desert Christian, Desert Winds, Lancaster High School, Lancaster Baptist, and Paraclete and Cortcel. I'm assuming all the high schools can participate if they want to?
That is correct.
Thank you. Uh, the commission currently meets once a month from the start of the school year until the end of May. Each year, the commission develops a work plan that identifies projects that the commission will work on for the year. The incoming commission will participate in several volunteer projects, including the Martin Luther King Day of Service, where they will coordinate their efforts with the city's Safer, Stronger Neighborhoods Committee to improve the facade of a local elementary school. The commission also plays a vital role in the coordination of the youth and government program. The commissioners assist with participant recruitment, pre-planning, event details, and directing fellow students during all the scheduled events. And this year's commissioners, when do they find out what role they get?
Um, in this commission, I would ask Patty that. The youth, in the youth and government is when they apply. That's a separate but related program. This commission, they're going to seat as a commission, they'll elect their own chair and vice chair?
Okay, I don't want to point the chair on this. That's okay, I was just asking. Okay. Uh, we have, is it Alamat?
Yeah.
Alamat Adaby?
Yeah.
Did I get it right?
That's going back.
Come on, we'll get it right. What's, how did I say it?
Adaby?
Adaby. Did I get it right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is Alamat Adaby from Antelope Valley High School. There's Samantha Riddington, would you stand up, please? From Desert Christian High School. We got Freeman Lyon from Lancaster High School. We got Paul DuFain from Lancaster Baptist. I've met you before, haven't I? Good. We got Brent Chapman from Paraclete High School. We got Natasha Castro from Cortcel High School. And we got Alex Clark from Antelope Valley Christian. So I want you guys to come up with something challenging for me, something that'll cause some debate, something that'll move the city forward. I want you to be innovative, creative, don't, you know, don't let them push you around, come up with something that will really improve the quality of what we provide the youth. Would you do that? I, I really want you to reach, because that's the way I like to do things. Okay? Good, thank you. So, you ready to get, well, first I got to nominate them. So these are my nominations.
That being motion, I'll second it.
Very good. Let's vote. Hey, you made it. Okay. Maybe you can come up with that free Wi-Fi we were talking about, right? Okay, come on. Oh, good idea. Okay, raise your right hand. After we say aye, we say our name, and then we'll go on after that, okay? I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
I support the United Constitution
and the Constitution of the State of California
Constitution of California
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
I bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
All right, let's do that one again. Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
Great. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter
Okay, let's do the last one again. The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
I mean, I want you guys forceful, aggressive. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if the parents would like to take some pictures, they can come up and, they'll be up there for a second. Mayor, if you'd stay for some pictures, if the parents want some picture.
And when the pictures are done, if the new commissioners would meet Deputy City Clerk Avery at the back of the chamber, she has a document for you to sign, please?
And can the city make pictures available for, that we've talked today?
Yes.
Okay, so if you contact the city, they'll, they'll also give you some pictures if you want them. All right, great. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Mayor, we are going to remove PH 1, but I think Councilwoman Marcus had a statement she wanted to make about that.
Okay.
Um, I believe that when I originally brought it forward, I think it was just a miscommunication. Um, I wasn't complaining about the yard sales themselves, I was complaining about the litter from the yard signs that are put out on telephone posts, out on corners, on, taped to the walls of the outsides of the neighborhoods, where these people just don't bother to go back out and pick up their trash. What I've come to understand is that we do have code enforcement, or we've got ordinances in place, and our code enforcement is just going to be a little bit more heightened to get out there and take care of some of these signs that are left out there. It's pretty inconsiderate of those people that have those yard sales, that leave that out there. I would encourage citizens to, to maybe take it down themselves. I would encourage citizens to maybe take it down themselves if it's in their neighborhood or something. I know I've personally taken signs down and delivered them to the homeowners. I would encourage others to do that as well. So, and it's just education. I think it's just citizens being proud of their neighborhood and proud of their city. And I would really appreciate it if, you know, maybe through this televising, that some people would be a little bit more aware of it. But the other part of it is, is it's code enforcement on Monday mornings need to go around and collect those signs. I mean, it's going to take time and energy, and the ones that have the address written on it, I think that they should get some kind of notice or something. But it wasn't the yard sales themselves and people having too many. Of course, we don't want them running a business from their home either, but we'll just go ahead and remove this at this time and let code enforcement take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. As to public hearing item number two, I again have to recuse myself that my wife is involved in negotiations for property within that area. So I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
Let the Director reflect that the Mayor has left the room. I'll open up the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone that is in the audience that had a speaker's card? Is there any correspondence?
No, sir.
That being the case, unless there's an objection from the Council, we'll waive the reading of the staff report and close the public hearing at this time. I would like to make one note that we're getting, the appropriations for this is about $2.2 million that we've received from Edison. So I'll entertain a discussion or a motion at this time.
Move adoption, resolution number 08-94.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Call for a vote. Let the Director reflect, the Mayor is back in the room, and I turn the chair over back again.
Thank you. City Clerk, do we have any communications?
For New Business One? No, sir.
I'm sorry, what?
For New Business One?
Am I jumping ahead?
Well, we're ready to do New Business. New Business, item number one.
Okay, so we've closed the public hearings, is that what we're, okay, great. Oh, you did that fast. All right, anything on New Business?
I have no communications. I'm not sure if there's any speakers.
I have no speaker's card on New Business One.
Okay, so New Business Item One?
I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 911.
I second that.
This is actually the introduction of the ordinance, not the adoption.
Okay, great. And do we have a motion? Okay, now we have New Business Two. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor Paris, and Councilmembers. We have before you on the agenda this evening a new business number one, an item that we would hope you will consider adopting and giving some direction to City Staff on pertaining to traffic calming in the City of Lancaster. I arrived on the scene a little more than five years ago, and it didn't take me very long to realize that we have some very fast-moving traffic. We have some frequent violations, have a lot of collisions, we had too many deaths, a lot of different problems with traffic. This was not something that I alone recognized, certainly, but also the Planning Commission, members of the Council, members of the community. We immediately set out to try to do something to improve that, and I think over the last few years, we have made significant progress with doing various things. We've put in the red light camera systems to help control people from running those red lights, and that has resulted in considerable reduction in violations at those particular intersections. We put up the radar speed feedback signs. We put in other new traffic control devices. The Sheriff's Department and their Traffic Control Division has done a remarkable job in increasing enforcement and looking out for those occasional violations that, if corrected, will prevent similar types of problems in the future. But it didn't seem quite to be enough, and so I had asked my traffic engineering staff to begin working on a traffic calming policy that would look not just at the major arterials and the secondary arterials, but also those residential neighborhoods and those types of streets, which often are the subject of concern by the neighbors who may live in that particular neighborhood. They oftentimes are dissatisfied because of cut-through traffic or because of what they consider to be too fast traffic. They often want to have four-way stop signs put in and other traffic control devices that frankly, the manual for Uniform Traffic Control just does not warrant for that particular location and circumstances. But we do not want to be unresponsive or non-responsive to those citizens and to the Council in those situations. So we have devised this traffic control policy, which sets another set of tools available to our citizens to have a dialogue first with the Traffic Engineering Division, the Public Works Department, ultimately to form for themselves a committee that would investigate specific conditions and compare them with all of the other things that have to go into the decisions about installing such devices. We're talking, and usually when citizens talk about traffic calming, they think speed bumps. And I want to tell you that we are not in favor of speed bumps for many reasons, but they are, a traffic calming tool that's been used in a number of other locations. The process and procedures that we have established in this ordinance, in this policy, would allow the citizens to hear directly from the first responders, the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, as to why certain types of traffic control devices or traffic calming devices would not be or would be suitable to their particular location. It provides a means, again, for communication with our traffic engineer, myself, to these same citizens, so they can review and understand each one of the different options available to them. Our Traffic Engineering Division spends a very large percentage of their time conducting traffic engineering surveys and studies of specific problem areas to try to determine what is the best solution. We will continue to do that, and where we find conditions merit having installations of new traffic control measures, we will continue to issue work orders and contracts to make those types of installations. We're not trying to give up that at all. And that also applies to the communities, the residential neighborhoods. But we think this will allow it to go one step further, and if the community, the neighborhood is still unsatisfied, they still think that they've got a problem, and it's not their own problem to resolve, then we will work with them such that they can identify how much it would cost that neighborhood, not only to install, but also to make it possible to remove, because we often find that traffic control calming devices such as that install the neighborhoods may be like peanut butter and sliced bread to begin with, but the taste wears off after a while, and then they want it removed because they look at it more as a hindrance than a problem than a benefit to the community. We think this is a very comprehensive process to help those citizens. We've also written into this traffic calming policy, though, the opportunity for us to apply a little bit different thinking on our arterials and our both primary and secondary arterials. And this would be for us to establish a new mechanism of establishing speeds on some of those very wide avenues that encourage the rapid speed from point A to point B, because you can see for 10 miles, and it's just straight as an arrow. But what this method would be, would be for us to establish what we call livable speed limits. Working with the Planning Department, the Public Works Department will bring back for the Council at a future date a list of all of those locations where we think perhaps livable speed limits should be considered. We have in this policy identified what that table would be, and we've identified the mechanism that we could get around, get around is not the right word, but that we could consider and then apply the 85th percentile rule that is followed, not just in the state of California, but across the country for setting speed limits. But it would help us to bring that under control. And we, again, think this is a very good policy that'll be of benefit to the community as a whole, to individual property owners and neighborhoods, as well as to us who are trying to maintain the arterials, primary and secondary. We have three recommendations to you then on this traffic calming policy this evening. The first would be to adopt the policy as we have submitted it, and then to direct the staff to take the necessary steps to implement and to integrate those policies into our day-to-day business. The second would authorize the Public Works Director, where it made sense to do so, to go ahead and make a change or two to that policy specific to a particular location. The third recommendation would be that on an annual basis, we would bring back to the Council a report of all of those considerations given to traffic calming situations and installations throughout the city, so that you could see what had come through in this policy process and what had actually been done. It would also report to you any variances that the Director of Public Works might have made to the policy. I do not envision that there would be many of those, if any at all, but it's just something that helps us to respond a little more quickly to something if we can handle it in that process. If there are questions the Council has, I'd certainly be happy to entertain them at this time. I did want to say one other thing. In this traffic calming policy, there are a series of photographs that you will see like this. This will be available to the public to pass out for a neighborhood that has a concern about their neighborhood. It shows what the specific traffic calming technique would be. It lists what the advantages and the disadvantages are, and it sets up some better understanding of those different tools. So with that, now I'll ask you for your questions.
I'm confused a little bit here. That means if you want to put in a speed limit, a streetlight, whatever, that would be your decision without any oversight before it was done?
No, sir, that's not correct.
Okay.
It's, in fact, quite different from that, in that they would have a number of things they would have to do, and this spells out each one of those steps. They would have to have the will, and then with that will, they would have to have a petition of a sufficient number of their neighbors, neighboring property owners, that this is something that we all feel is a problem. And then they would have an extensive period of time that they would review and meet and discuss with the city authorities the various aspects of what they're trying to achieve and what we would recommend to them. In many cases, we would recommend nothing, or doing nothing, because many times, that is exactly the answer. It's more maybe putting a deputy or a speed trailer out at that location for a couple of weeks and just reminding people. We will always go that route first and try to minimize the number of traffic calming devices that would be installed throughout the city, if at all.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
It doesn't.
I'm sorry. Let me hear it again, sir.
What I'm curious about is if you decide that you're going to add traffic devices that would normally not be warranted under the established procedure now, who makes that decision? After all of that stuff is done, who makes the decision?
The community, after the decision of what they wanted to do had been made, that decision would come to the Council.
I see, okay.
And the Council would then say yes, because you would be accepting their contract with the city to pay for installing it and to pay for removing it. So the Council continues to be the final say on it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have two speaker cards. David Burrell?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, thank you very much. I live on 27th Street West. I've resided there since the end of December 2001. I am currently the Neighborhood Watch Leader for the Neighborhood Watch Group. It's on 27th Street West between J-4 and J-8. A few months before I moved in, Amargosa Creek Middle School had been completed and ready for occupancy, and they had started holding classes. Amargosa Creek is right on the southwest corner of J and 27th Street West. Subsequent to the school's full attendance, it became pretty apparent that the street was a high-speed corridor at least twice a day. This became, this was justified, in my experience, by the fact that between sessions, things were extremely calm. In addition to that, throughout the day, while school is in session, there were a number of people who had business at the school, to or from, who sped through. The street is posted 25 miles an hour northbound when you enter from J-8. I don't know how many people even see that. There's no other indication what the speed limit is on J-8. There's one traffic control, and that's at J-4, which makes a T-intersection with 27th Street West. In our Neighborhood Watch Group, the very first thing we were concerned about, and have continued to be concerned about, is the speed. One child in the past seven years has already been hit. There have been a couple of near accidents on the street. My conversations with traffic personnel working for the city is reflected in what Public Works Director Randy Williams said, that basically, speed bumps were not something they wanted to go into. However, to rebut that assertion, I would like to offer an evidence testimony from one of our newest neighborhood members, a Burbank fireman. The very first thing out of his mouth was, what can we do about the speeds on the street? He has two young children. A number of our residents are older, they have grandchildren who come. Not only that, of course, there are the schoolchildren that come down the street, some of them walking in the street. And I told him, well, we've talked to them, and they don't really seem to have very many concrete solutions for us. And I'm, he said, I said, we like speed bumps. He said, well, you tell them that the City of Burbank has speed bumps, and it certainly doesn't interfere with what the Fire Department is doing. So I would like to urge a greater willingness on the part of the city to accept that kind of a proposed solution. And I very much look forward to hearing from Mr. Williams as to what exactly things we might be able to do, because putting the traffic cuffs there, having the speed trailers, that's a Band-Aid on a broken arm. I mean, they regularly speed whenever they have an opportunity. And also, one question, Mr. Williams, the cost of a speed bump, would that be borne by the citizens on the street?
If the, if it's in a neighborhood street, then that neighborhood wouldn't bear the cost of the installation.
Well, that...
If it is in a, I think with the street that you're talking about is a secondary arterial, it would be one of those candidates for the livable speed limit that I was talking about.
Have we already had a fatality there, this?
Not a fatality, well, one child was hit in the last seven or eight years. I don't believe it's a fatality, but if, so the answer to that, as far as I know, is no.
Okay, and we'd prefer not to wait till we have one.
Yeah, exactly.
I would like to make sure we follow up on this and really focus on this. I mean, if a Neighborhood Watch comes to us and tells us this is happening, we have to respond, you know, especially if it's in a school area. We just have to respond. Why don't we, I mean, I think this is out of the traffic calming area. I think this is more significant than that. So if, Mr. Williams, if you could set something up, I'd like to attend when there's a final disposition as to what we're going to do to fix this. And while we're on a, why can't we put up speed cameras? You know, we take a picture of the license plate and give them a ticket.
I think there's a legal reason for that, Randy, if you want to.
This particular policy would allow us, for the first time, to be able to do that sort of thing.
Really? We could actually put up a camera and issue citations with a speed camera?
Yes, sir.
And we could do that at every school zone?
I'm sorry, sir.
We could do that at every school zone?
I'm not sure, sir.
Okay, why don't we look into that? My concern about speed bumps are people with neck injuries. They actually cause them a significant amount of discomfort, if not pain, if they hit it. And if there's some way around that, I would like to avoid it. Maybe there is no way around it, but I think we want to explore this idea of securing the school zones if this now enables us to do that. All right? So why don't we trail this for a month and then see where we're at? Give me a call.
Very good.
Okay?
I will.
And I absolutely guarantee we'll respond to you on this.
Thank you very much.
It's also the policy of the city that the Neighborhood Watch Groups, we do pay attention to them, and, you know, I'd like to thank you for your participation in that. I think if we're going to be, have a safe community, it's going to happen in the Neighborhood Watch, and so we'll be as responsive as we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure to serve as Neighborhood Watch Leader, and we have a lot of support on our street, and we're glad to participate in any way we can to help move the city forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I could follow up on that, when we, when I think of a non-arterial street where the speed's too high, it's long, straight, narrow...
speed's too high, it's long, straight, narrow, narrow road, 27th Street West is the first one I think of, because it's two, two-and-a-half miles long, and there's a few stop signs in the way, and that's it. Interesting, on our, Part Two of the report, we have "Traffic Calming on Arterials," there's a sentence which says, "Therefore, excessive vehicle speed should also be considered as sufficient cause for intervention." I don't see that same phrase in the neighborhood traffic coming, but I think the same concern applies. We need to come up with a set of tools that we can apply inside of a neighborhood, as well as on major arterials.
Councilmember Silvio, the tools that are in this policy can be used in either location, either in a neighborhood or on the arterial streets. It's just that with the arterials, we're probably going to be a lot more selective, because we still need to be able to safely remove passengers and goods from one side of the community to the other. But we precisely want to do what you've just suggested, is provide some additional controls there as well.
And to be fair, I did take that sentence a little out of context. That was to allow speed as a justification for a traffic calming measure, instead of waiting till there's a collision or a fatality.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. I started coming to council five years ago, basically wanting something done about traffic, so I am very grateful that you're taking this seriously. First of all, that young man inspired me before, and why aren't more people grateful? We've kind of lost our way in the past. About a month ago, I was going to say a couple things, and I got a little off track, but I was going to talk about Theodore Roosevelt, the reason I brought him up, the 1907 run on the banks and how he handled it. And it wasn't really handled well, and some historians say that he had a naive understanding of economics, because he sort of felt that if the moral course and direction of the country was okay, then the economy would be okay. And there's great truth to that. Henry Paulson, in those hearings, the, a couple weeks ago, or a month ago when I was here, when he got up there and said that there were many things he didn't understand about the economic system when he took over as Treasury Secretary, I thought, "Well, okay, nobody can know everything." But Ben Bernanke, I mean, excuse me, Alan Greenspan, when he was on a couple weeks ago, he kind of admitted, to paraphrase, that he didn't understand that people would take advantage of the system. I remember one of the funnest things I use as a quote is Homer Simpson, when he was talking to his son, Bart, who was feeling a little guilty about shirking his duty, trying to help him. He says, "Son," he said, "weaseling out of things is what man has above all the other animals, except perhaps the weasel." And that's true, but there's another thing about humans that we have in common with every form of life, and that's that we exploit the environment when the ability exists. So in any of these traffic measures, I've had the trailer, you know, there aren't enough law enforcement personnels. We need to do electronic enforcement. That's what the Human Accountability Project, that I promised two weeks ago I would come back and talk about, and I will talk about further in my last three minutes, was about. We need to do something to help people feel empowered. There's no greater joy than to love and respect the law. But I'll tell you, there's a detrimental aspect to it, when you see the cars speed down your street, and you know that there's absolutely nothing we can do about it collectively, I certainly as a parent. I have the two small children, and I cannot still teach them to ride their bikes on my street. I just can't in good conscience let them out there with these people that speed up and down a 25 mile an hour street at 40, 50, 60 miles an hour with regularity. So what I want to do is come back in my last three minutes and just talk a little bit more about this Human Accountability Project. You know, we can disagree about the big things, but we cannot disagree collectively that we should be more decent to each other and be more considerate, and there's a tremendous benefit that comes from just abiding by the law and driving slowly enough, but there has to be a way to compel people to do it. And that's what the Human Accountability Project is about, and I will see you in a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any other cards on this?
There's no more speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt the recommendations of staff.
I second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
I could make one request, though, of the city managers, that on Number Two, when it says authorize the Public Works Director to make any interim changes to the policy as deemed necessary, if we could get like a memo or an update of what's being changed on the policy as we go forward?
Yes, sir.
Elizabeth Prubaker, the Housing Director, will now talk to us about item Number Three, amendment to the municipal code regarding the sweeping of litter into the gutters.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and City Council Members. Before you tonight is the amending of Section 8.20080 of Chapter 8.20 of the Lancaster Municipal Code relating to sweeping litter into gutters. The public places a high priority on the commitment and ability of local agencies to maintain neighborhoods and preserve the value of public and private investments. Section 8.20.080 is being amended to prohibit sweeping litter, leaves, and similar refuse into gutters. This is a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, and welfare arising from the accumulation of leaves and similar refuse in the gutters preventing the proper flow of runoff water throughout the city. In order to avoid such health and safety problems, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon the date of its adoption. In order to maintain the quality of Lancaster neighborhoods and preserve the value of public and private investments, staff recommends the introduction and adoption of Ordinance Number 912, amending Section 8.20.080 of Chapter 8.20 of the Lancaster Municipal Code. Any questions?
So a shorter way of saying that is rather than sweeping it into the gutter, pick it up and put it in the trash can.
That would be yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, because this is an urgency ordinance, it does require a four-fifths approval.
Why did it become so urgent after 30 years?
Because the leaves are coming down now.
Leaves are falling.
They didn't do that the last 30 years?
It has to do with waste management's policies.
Well, it has to do with waste management policy and the amount of sweeping of the streets. We don't want to increase it because of the leaves coming down, and in addition to that, it was costing citizens $2 per bag, and it no longer costs them $2 per bag to put their leaves in the bag.
It's free now, correct?
Yeah. And then plus, we have more gutters now, and we'd like to keep them clean, so that when it rains, the rain goes in and down and doesn't cause flooding.
How are we going to enforce it?
Well, if we're driving by and we see you sweeping your leaves into the street, we're going to have to give you an NOV. Or if we give, receive a complaint, then we'll have to go out and see if you're actually sweeping them into the street.
Some people have nasty neighbors.
Or if you end up on YouTube.
Maybe that's better than a notice.
Actually, YouTube's about the only thing that really is, all right.
I'll go with it.
We will also be making some public education, too, putting press releases and such out.
Well, couldn't we get Waste Management to buy the leaves? I mean, aren't they using it for compost or something?
They actually are. When they pick them up, I'm sure they make money off of them somehow.
Well, gee, shouldn't they be sharing the wealth?
They have a franchise fee with the city.
All right. Clear motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we adopt urgency ordinance Number 912.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. City Manager, you have any announcements?
Just one, sir. As many of you know, Lyle Norton is retired. Bob Green was our interim director for a while. Bob's done a fabulous job, so we took the interim off of his title, and he is our Parks, Recreation, Arts Director, and we feel very fortunate to have someone of that caliber. I'd like to congratulate Bob.
You've been a joy to work with, by the way. I really enjoyed the experience. I find you to be excited about your job. You don't hesitate to bring in innovative ideas. You're absolutely what we want in that position. I'm glad you're there.
I appreciate that, and it's a pleasure working with the council. You're very creative, and the way you're looking at things, it allows us to be thinking outside the box.
Great, thank you. City Clerk, any announcements?
We request any person who would like to address the Redevelopment Agency and City Council on Non-Agendized Matters to complete a speaker card. You will find speaker cards on the back table of the council chambers. Additionally, we respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the City Council, City Manager, or City staff will be able to contact you, either by phone or by mail. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, please notice there are three lights. The green light comes on when you begin. The yellow light will come on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light will come on when your three minutes are up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the City Council and Redevelopment Agency meeting, and we appreciate your cooperation. State law prohibits the City Council and Redevelopment Agency from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clausen? I want you to work with my dog.
And for hire. I do it for a living. I'm a professional, my name's Katie Clausen, I'm a professional dog trainer and behaviorist. I'm here to address the problem with the pit bulls again.
Eric, get her information.
Anyways, the reason I'm here is because I said that I'd bring you some statistics, which I do have, and one of the things that I found out was, everything that I've read, biters were significantly more likely to be German Shepherds or Chows. The number-one dog bite is not pit bulls, it is German Shepherds. Let's see here, Rottweilers were the most commonly reported breed involved in fatal attacks, followed by pit bull-type breed dogs. And the problem was, is that nobody seemed to understand or know how to ID that pit bull type, and those were always identified by the owners or whoever deemed them as pit bull types. And the 90 cases were excluded from overall study, because the breed involved could not be determined without doing a DNA. Another interesting fact was that there's a, let's see here, the resulting index showed that German Shepherd dogs were five times more likely to cause bite trauma than pit bulls over a 10-year period. It also stated that we did not identify any of these fighting breeds to be likely to attack more frequently than the average dog. And there's a very well-known trainer by the name of Dr. Ian Dunbar, who is a veterinarian and a behaviorist in Berkeley, and I've been many times to his seminars, and the man is amazing. He does positive motivation. And one of the things that he talked about is that the truth is, is that SUVs are far more dangerous than pit bulls, and they're still on the road. As a public health researcher, I want to prevent all mortality and morbidity, but the truth is that just over 60, there's just over 60 million dogs in America, and who knows how many millions of pit bulls? It's not statistically a significant issue. Therefore, it is at least 100,000 times more likely that a pit bull will be killed by a human than the other way around. And again, you've got to look at the fact, it's the owners, they'll move on to the next breed. It'll be German Shepherds, it'll be Rottweilers, it will be a mixed breed, and who's going to determine what is what? And last but not least, I haven't heard anything from anybody about maybe trying to resolve this, and last, and I wanted to know if that was still going to happen. And then I also have some interesting information on Lilian's Law, a Texas law, and it has to do with a new tough dog bite law.
Jerry. You know, I did talk to you about meeting together and trying to come up with a comprehensive plan, and then I was out of the area for a while. Mr. Rosigian, if we could arrange to get that meeting set up in the next two weeks, I would appreciate it, okay?
Okay, and I think our city attorney has some things to add, too.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to indicate also that the draft ordinance that we've been working on will be distributed to the council for review Friday.
Okay, before that happens, I would like the group to be involved in it, because oftentimes, what occurs is, you know, we get the draft ordinance out, and then we adopt positions on it, and then we get the interest groups' involvement. What I'd like to do is get the interest groups' involvement before we put the draft ordinance out.
I will make it available to staff then, and then we'll contact the groups that have indicated an interest, and we'll meet with, we'll set up meetings with them before we bring it back to council.
Okay, is that agreeable with everyone?
Yes.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine. I wanted to leave this Lilian's Law, because this might be a viable situation.
Could you give it to the city attorney?
Absolutely.
And we'll look at that.
Thank you.
At the same time, however, you know, pit bulls have become iconic to gangs, and I want to make it so uncomfortable in this city for gangs. I mean, if they were driving a certain color car, I would go after the color car. I really want this to be the most inhospitable city for gangs that ever existed, and one of the ways we're doing that is to go after the dogs they like.
But what happens with the people who have the service dogs, who have the wonderful, wonderful family dogs, you know?
And I totally, I totally understand that, I really do. I understand that there's a weight of what we're doing that is inflicting some level of, you know, I don't know the word to describe it, but their lives would be better without it, and I feel the weight of that. But I also understand that people have a right to be safe, and until we eliminate these gangs, they're not. And I think you've seen it, we're slowly eliminating them. This has become a, will soon become a no-gang zone, because it's unsafe for gang members to be here. They can't even have a dog here, and that's exactly the way we want it. And unfortunately, many of us will bear the weight of this until it's done.
Well, that Lilian's Law is something worth looking at.
And we will look at it.
It does talk about consequences, and jail time, and huge fines, and felony charges, and on and on, and you must...
I'm up for that for gang bangers.
And it also talks about how if a fatality happens, that they're going to jail, and it's the owners that are prosecuted. You know, sometimes when they're loose, it's kind of hard to figure out who owns who, but it's a start, and they have to have specific insurance stating that they can account for if something happens. So it's an interesting law. I just ran across it today, and I would definitely take a look.
Let's look at that.
I'll be happy to look at it. We've incorporated most of those concepts into the draft ordinance. The focus is on the owner.
Okay, let's make sure it's all there, and if there's something there, we can add what we add. And Eric, if you would get Ms. Clausen's contact information? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Darlene, we've missed you. You haven't been around.
I didn't go to Italy, I was here while we were here.
Hey, hey, I had to meet with Margaret Thatcher. Do you want to see the picture?
Because you weren't here to see him.
Yeah?
I have to raise this up if I...
You just want to play with the button.
I do, I do. I'm disagreeing, right? I'm getting stiff-shouldered coming up here and bending over. Okay. This council saw and jumped on the opportunity to have a musical road, two rarities, to be sure.
You can't be against the musical road.
Give me, I've got three minutes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Start over.
Start over.
I mean, the musical road and... I mean the musical road, and for a council to move so fast, you did good. How do you like that? There are at least forty-seven monuments on Lancaster Boulevard that make up the Wall of Honor. That's good also. We in Lancaster and the Antelope Valley have something that nowhere else in the United States could we find one. I'm talking about a street on which a space shuttle was towed through the city. News media from all over the United States came to cover the historic event. The director of John F. Kennedy Space Center was also in attendance. Yet thirty-one years later, to my knowledge, there's no monument, sign, or marker indicating the occasion ever took place. In my opinion, Tenth Street East should have been renamed Space Shuttle Way at that time in 1977, the same year Lancaster became a city. Obviously, we cannot rename the street again, but we could and should remedy the oversight of history at long last. The space shuttle program will officially end in 2010. We were privileged to have it in our area and should act like it. I have made two draft sketches of ideas of what could be posted along Challenger Way. The one with the space shuttle could serve well on a freestanding monument. The other could be hung beneath existing Challenger Way street signs. It might require about six signs from Avenue G to Avenue M. Such event and route markers would serve as reminders to drivers and others at Challenger Way intersections about a part of important history of which they can be proud. Ask yourselves, how will tourists know, your children and their children know whether the space shuttle over Landry Route of 1977 was when we're not here to tell them? I hope this council will pick up on this and give it serious consideration. By the way, on the way in here, someone said, "After they get those signs up, we can have another musical road there when you turn left on Avenue M, like up, up, and away," or something appropriate. Just a thought. Now, here's a sketch of what I—well, I'll just give you these. Can I come up there?
You certainly can.
They've frisked me twice, so.
We've been getting threatening mail.
Uh, we went freestanding one down by Avenue M, Challenger Way at the intersection. Now this, I would like to see something similar to this hanging underneath the Challenger sign at each intersection.
Hey, why don't we get a group together and figure out a way to get one of the space shuttles? They're going to retire them anyway. We'll certainly do this, I think this is a wonderful idea.
It's stiff competition.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I've been trading on the Mayflower, I just got came on the Mayflower, so I remember this mess.
You know, let's get some people that, you know, maybe retired from NASA. Okay, I'm up for it, we'll do it. Mr. Green, is that your job?
We'll get a new—we'll get a song, but you turn and stand up there, because there's no houses.
Well, you know, maybe someday there might be. Oh, good point.
Unless they're music lovers.
Mayor, we'll be happy to take a look at the signage and stuff and come back with what it would take.
Well, those are just—
Of course, no, I love the idea, Darlene. Would you make certain somebody gets ahold of Eric and involve her in the process?
I think thirty-one years is about time we did it.
Yep, I do.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Put this empty paper on my letter, can't let you have that.
You mean you're not going to put it back down? No, I'm kidding.
Well, I'm written, just like it says on the paper.
Okay. Okay, Cleo Goss. I was teasing you.
Well, I was taught, when you mess something up, go back and fix it, and she reminded me.
No footprint, right? Mom, you don't need to give her any ideas.
I'm all for a shuttle on a stick, well, as well.
I'm sorry, you gotta use the mic, I'm losing—you know, I'm going deaf, I'm—
I was just commenting that I'm all for the shuttle on a stick as well.
Isn't that a great idea?
Yes, okay. An MSN article a few weeks ago reported Lancaster as having the second-largest number of foreclosures in the nation, followed by Palmdale ranked three. There were 3,543 foreclosure filings between January and August of 2008. The article reported that almost every block in Lancaster has at least two vacant bank-owned homes. The article said, and I quote, "Unlike other parts of the country, this affects every neighborhood, from crackerbox, starter homes, to custom estates in gated communities." A UCLA economist speaking about the Antelope Valley said builders put up homes they shouldn't have in this commuter community, and relied on subpride loans for lower-income buyers to purchase them. Of the 4,063 homes listed as active in the Greater Antelope Valley's multiple listing service in late October, seventy-four percent were owned by banks or short sales. A local real estate agent referring to one of the newer neighborhoods with 3,000 square-foot-plus homes in the coveted west side of Lancaster had foreclosures and short sales accounting for almost half of the homes. The agent was quoted as saying, "It's quite an enticement for teenagers looking for a place to hang out, drink, or do drugs, and it's also a draw for vandals looking to steal hardware, appliances, or even the air conditioning." She said she's had homes where even the inside flooring was taken. Even the Antelope Valley press reported that investors purchased one out of every five homes last year in the Antelope Valley and one out of every three homes in the market peak in 2003. Local realtors claimed that sales are picking up, with the 1,800 of the little over 4,000 homes on the market being scooped up by investors. With figures like these, where will the customers for the two proposed commercial centers across the street from Cortez High School come from? Foreclosure.com identified 3,599 homes in this area, the 93536 ZIP code, as being in preforeclosure, foreclosure, bankruptcy, sheriff's sales, or having a tax lien. With the number of foreclosures and invested purchases in the 93536 ZIP code, the only building happening on the west side now is the building of the next high-crime neighborhood. And the second question is, where will the renters of the many shops for these proposed two commercial centers come from? Retail stores are closing in record numbers. Chains like Wicks, Levitts, Mervyn's, and Cop USA are going out of business. Foot Locker, The Gap, KB Toys, Dillard's, JCPenney, Circuit City, and Lowe's, to name a few, are closing underperforming stores. Even Home Depot, one of the proposed anchor stores for one of the commercial complexes, announced it would close stores. Many other stores are scaling back on expansion. Will there be anybody brave enough to enter into a rental contract with the landlords of these proposed commercial complexes? Rezoning the lots across from Cortez High School to commercial in these trying economic times may result in two mega strip malls with vacant shops surrounding the two competing supercenters.
Thank you. You know, as this—Cleo, as this thing progresses, I don't want any illusions as to at least where the mayor's coming from on this. Lancaster has to have a commercial center on the west side. Well, let me finish, I'll let you finish, okay? We simply have to. It's—if—in order to capture the sales tax that pays for the deputies, that pays for all the city services, if we fail to have—to make it possible for a developer to build a commercial center on the west side, we would be negligent. We would be not doing what the citizens have elected us to do, and that's to protect the welfare of the community. If we allow that tax base to go south, it will seriously affect our ability to provide services to the west side. I don't have an opinion as to where it should be, but I know it's a hundred-million-dollar development, and I don't really get to choose where it goes. What I need to do is to encourage that it does get developed. And the only reason I bring that out is because I don't want any illusions as to what my thinking is in regards to this. Do I wish the Antelope Valley was like it was when I grew up? I really do. I enjoy growing up here. But the reality of life is that we're not able to do that anymore. And, you know, we're certainly going to consider everything, we're going to make it available, make public comment as available as it can be. The Planning Commission has a difficult decision to make, but I certainly hope they pay attention to the fact that all of these services cost an enormous amount of money, and without our share of the sales tax, it's simply not going to be provided. And so we may have to choose at some point, you know? What are we willing to give up in order to have those deputies?
We are not proposing building this, but—
Okay.
As long as you don't do it across the street from the high school.
And I certainly understand that.
Where's it going? Anywhere else.
And I certainly understand that. And hopefully, they'll decide that they want to build it out on 100th Street. I don't think that's going to happen.
Yeah, because that one is pretty far from the east.
Okay, okay.
It's not that way.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, I wasn't inviting a free-for-all. Heather Thomas-Brown?
Hello, Mayor, city council members. I'm here because I've done some extensive research on the chloramine, which is chlorine and ammonia-fused. Now, the reason you're supposedly putting chloramine in the water is because it kills bacteria, it's better at killing bacteria, wrong. If you have a taxed immune system, you'll have to boil the water ten more minutes to get all the pathogens out. It decomposes at negative forty degrees Celsius, highly violent, it's highly volatile, at negative forty degrees. Anything above that, you're going to have some problems. We're in the desert. I mean, I'm thinking, who decided this? Who are the people that decided that chloramine would be a better thing to put in the water? It's toxic to fish. I thought the postcard was real cute. You know, why did they put two X's over the little fish's eyes and turn them upside down? Because it will absorb into their bloodstream and kill fish immediately. So if you have a tank, an aquarium, or anything like that, you're going to have to totally purify the water through a granulated active system, and then through charcoal, because it's not removed easily. And is this water going to go into the lakes? I mean, Fin and Feather's probably not going to be too happy about it, it'll kill all the fish there. If you have—on kidney dialysis, it has to be removed from the water to do kidney dialysis, unlike chlorine, because it will permeate through the membranes and get into the bloodstream and basically poison and kill the person. That's on kidney dialysis, so it's got to be removed from that. It causes pinhole leaks in copper and galvanized steel. So you're looking at a bunch of problems with plumbing. If—I mean, I don't understand why you would put something in the water that would be toxic to fish, and animals, some animals, even though you got the postcard that says, "Oh yeah, this is safe, EPA says it's safe." Well, I'm sure the EPA would say whatever you paid them to say these days.
Unfortunately, I think you're right.
Yeah, and the vapor from the bathtub, let alone—I mean, forget, you know, if you don't drink it, you can't filter it out with a Pure Advantage Plus. And if you're in a shower or a bathtub, the vapors are toxic. It causes upper respiratory problems, and I mean, there's a whole list of problems that this stuff causes. While they have it in San Francisco, I understand, they're trying to get it removed, and it's very hard, once it's in the water, to remove it. I mean, are they going to remove this stuff before it runs off into the lakes and streams and oceans? Because they're going to have to. And I mean, is that going to be a cost put back on us taxpayers, or what? I mean, why was this chosen? It's not cheaper, it's more expensive in the long run, if you think about it. You know, I mean, it's—the people that are, you know, have HIV or have immunocompromised systems are going to have to boil their water, I mean, it's just a whole, long list, and I just wondered, who was it that decided this?
Well, it wasn't us, but I think that what we have failed to do is to take a position on it. And I think the reason we failed to take a position on it is because we were comfortable in not doing that, and I think we're going to. And in fact, Mr. Williams, I would like a—I would like to sit down with you and figure out how we can get the information in front of the council, and let the council take a position as to whether or not this is something we want to subject our citizens to, because it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to do this.
I don't think so, if you do put the chloramine, can they buy my property? Because I want to move.
But I want you to be clear on this, it really isn't our decision.
Right.
We can take a position and use whatever weight we have to make them reverse their decision if we decide that that's the appropriate thing to do.
Well, I would be aggressive about it then, because if you're a pool owner, you're going to have to put additional chlorine in to remove the bacteria that's in there, because it actually does not make the water any better. It makes it—it's not as good a sanitizer as chlorine is. It's a fusion of chlorine and ammonia.
Can't believe you're going to have an argument about whether or not we should drink chlor- chlorine or chlorine and ammonia.
Well, they haven't done a lot of research on it, they haven't done a lot of research, but if you have to do—put additional sanitizer in a pool, and this is supposed to be just as efficient, it's not efficient, so, thank you.
Okay, we will, we will address it.
Okay. I'm just thinking, if you have foreclosures and people find out this is in the water out here—
Maybe they have come, huh?
They won't come in, no, they'll not want to be out here.
Hey, maybe we can make it so that Section 8 can't come here if it has chloramines, well, no, that would more hurt.
I don't want to be—
Never mind, I'm just brainstorming.
I'm not Section 8, I don't want to go here, it's in the water, but thank you.
Thank you.
I might point out, too, and this is just from reports in the paper, this was obviously a very big issue during the election for the AVAC board, and the AVAC, at least their stated position has been that any of their purveyors can choose not to have this technology. Is that correct, Randy?
I think that this—if you're talking about Roseman Community Services District, yes, their board has taken that position, and they're seeking options to try to provide other disinfection processes there. I understand that there has been some movement that was suggested by the supervisor that the county get involved and host a number of public meetings to provide some information from their perspective. Water Works 40, of course, as that water district is the primary provider of potable water in the valley, second to them only is Palmdale Water District, and they will be offering their perspective as part of that public hearing process. So there is means underway to get additional information out about chloramines to the citizens. But certainly, if the council desires, we can have those same people or others come in and present to you information to compare chloramines with free chlorine and other disinfection processes, and the pluses and minuses of each of those.
You know, what I would really like from you is to know what is safer, and, you know, I want to hear all of it, but at the end of the day, I want you to tell me what's safer. You know, and it seems to me that the last thing we should do is be putting more contaminants into people, especially in light of, you know, what is essentially a public health crisis in environmental illnesses. So with that in mind, this is not something I want to go by the wayside, but in all your free time, would you—I mean, I recognize how incredibly busy the staff is, but I think this is significant enough that we really have to put some energy behind it and take a stand.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Nicole Parsons? David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council.
No speed bumps.
I like the 13th and Jackman there, that dip in the road, that's what I want. You know, when I was researching this traffic program I'm trying to pitch and looking into the red lights, and maybe Mr. Williams can tell me this about our city, but three years ago, they told me in West Hollywood and Beverly Hills, where they had those traffic cameras, that yes, they'll get you going through the red light, but even though it's timed and they can tell exactly how fast you're blowing through, if you blow through at 100 miles an hour, you still don't get a ticket. They can only ticket you for running the stop sign. So—but this is what I had written here, and I would like to come back and read this all to you sometime, but I said, "Gentlemen, instead of coming to you to ask for a traffic solution, I have brought you one. The hardest part of any solution is to get enough people to believe the new way is better than the old way. I know there are a lot of people who believe it is their God-given right to operate a motor vehicle as recklessly as they choose, without regard for any—anything other than their own thrill index, so I realize we're up against a real dilemma. I know how strongly in the past I would have resisted even being told to put on my seatbelt, but I also know that I wouldn't have done many of the foolish reckless things in a car that I did if I would have got dinged for it." And so that's why I'm advocating, and still am, this electronic traffic monitoring, that is quite comprehensive, and it's two parts to initiate. It says, "So I promise I'll keep coming back and keeping my promise till I convince you we can fix this, and then we can move on. The cornerstone of this plan is a computational tool and a thought experiment I have called Bluff's theorem." The other day, I was coming back from the store, and my eight-year-old, Nebo, he's real attuned to the traffic, and he'll always tell me, "It's 40 miles an hour, it's 45 miles an hour," you know, it gets oppressive after a while, but part of this plan was to have our youth— You know, it gets oppressive after a while, but part of this plan was to have our youth, pre-driver ed age, who are most at risk and most available to be brought to the side of the law, to help put together this Bluff's theorem, which is a computational tool. Let me see if I can find it here. Basically, the theorem says that we are going to investigate and help count this, the number of unsighted traffic violations divided by the number of sighted ones. And then the cost of all traffic violation-related expenses added to what could be saved equals the true success rate of traffic enforcement and its true cost. And our current methods fail. And there are all these other things that are involved in here, and I would really like a chance to come back sometime and give this a thorough reading. It'll take about 10 minutes, and it would be a great benefit, I think, to everyone to look into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Whipler?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak. Somebody stole my thunder on the chloramines, but I've been in the water waste industry for 28 years. I currently work out at March Air Force Base. And when I learned that AVEC was planning on adding chloramines to the water, actually additionally ammonia, I had to voice my opinion against it, because being a resident of Lancaster, I don't want chloramines in my water. She already stated most of the reasons why, so I'm just up here saying I agree with her. But if you need any assistance in finding out the information of why I oppose the chloramines, I'm more than willing to, I'll leave my business card and stuff with you, and you can contact me when you.
You know, I'd really like to see some peer-reviewed research.
Sure.
That's what I would like to see. Whenever we get emotional issues like this, you know, I really don't want the junk science. I'd like the peer-reviewed. But I think you're correct. I think you, I think you phrase it accurately. What they're really doing is adding ammonia.
Exactly.
And they framed it with the word chloramine. Yeah, it hadn't occurred to me before, but...
Yeah, there's, there's better ways of treating the water than adding ammonia to it. And ammonia adding to, well, in the wastewater treatment, we try to remove ammonia. That's one of our processes, and they're adding it in. So they're actually making our work a little bit difficult. And that's what we use for recycling the water and water reclamation. So they're adding, adding to the problem and solving it.
And I think of all the natural food my wife is making me eat to avoid cancer, and then I'm going to drink ammonia. It just doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't. So, so if you need any information, I'm available, and I'll leave a couple of my cards, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will definitely look into this. Okay? Any other speaker cards? Okay, we're good? All right, that closes the public business from the floor. Any council reports? I've been gone a month. I mean, never mind. Any council comments? Okay, I have a few. I have a bunch. One of the things is we need to work up some type of fundraiser for the transitional housing units at the homeless shelter. We now have 14 apartments, and I went over there and looked at them. They're, it's a wonderful operation that Catholic Charities is doing, where we'll actually have 14 units for families to transition them back into the workforce, but there's no furniture. So that's something we need to address with public donations or something like that. I'm probably going to do a fundraiser at the house, and Mr. Wilson can't come, and okay, you can come, and see if we can, you know, get these apartments furnished. It's a travesty not to have them utilized now that the county built them. Did the county build them? Build them? Where did we get the money for that?
It was a county grant.
That was Mike Antonovich, wasn't it?
Yes, but we own the facility, and then we lease it to Catholic charities.
Okay, so we really need to get those up and running. The other thing I want to talk about is I would like the community to give us some input about the possibility of putting a veterans' commission together. I was at the Veterans' Day celebration at the Joshua Memorial, and it occurred to me with the new president, this war is going to come to a quick conclusion. And I remember back in the 70s, when that happened in Vietnam, and it really was the local communities that failed the servicemen. It wasn't really anyone else, it was the local communities. And I think we need to pay more attention to how we welcome home the veterans from the Iraq War, especially in light of the way I think it's going to close down. We're in danger of repeating the mistakes that we made in, you know, 50 years ago or 40 years ago, and I don't want to be at the helm when we do that. And so for you veterans out there, I would like you to get ahold of me, let's put a commission together, and let's figure out a way to celebrate the return home and make it a different experience than what we experienced 40 years ago. And if we can get that back on the agenda in the next 30 days so that it's something we actually proceed with and progress with. I was kind of struck by the celebration, and it's talking about, you know, Memorial Day is for the people who lost their lives. Veterans' Day is the day for people who survived. And we could do a much better job than we're doing, and I think it's critical that we do it, at least for the next few years, as this war winds down. Okay? Could we talk about that and work on that? I also want to announce the resignation of Darren Parker from the Architectural and Design Planning Commission. We thank him for his service, and I will be appointing someone to take his place in the near future. And do we have a vice chairman of that, Mrs. Cook?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, then you will be in charge of the meeting upcoming. And until we do a replacement and figure out what we're going to do in regards to the chairman, it's your responsibility. I'd also like to meet with three of you. I can't meet with four of you, but I can meet with three of you, and figure out the direction we're going to take and what's the best way to reappoint, okay? And who we should reappoint. I'd like your input, is what I'm saying. Okay? Thank you. And the good news, I think by the end of the year, before Christmas, we will be making some announcements that will not only ensure the financial security for the Antelope Valley, but it will literally change the world. And I just want to give you a teaser, because some incredible things are going to happen in this community that are really earthshaking, aren't they? Wouldn't you say? It will change the world. So stay tuned. But I just, but I'm not going to tell you until Christmas. Okay? Okay, we have no closed session, because your mayor doesn't believe in them. And the next regular meeting will be, what, November 25th?
No, December 9th.
Oh, that's, that's the blue stuff was telling me it was canceled. The red stuff is telling me. It's December 9th at 5:00 PM, we'll have our next regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.